All right, it's eighteen thirty. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Regular meeting Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me in prayer. Dear God, we pray that you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles on which we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take action to accomplish your goals. In your name we pray, amen. And please join me in the pledges. First, the United American flag.
What leads to the flag of the United States of America? And do the Republic of which is stamped, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. God was Texas. Okay, so we'll move on to item, uh, item number four, citizens' comments. No, uh, no one wants to say anything? All right. So, with no, uh, no citizens wishing to address the commission, we'll move on to item number five, and I'll call for the approval of minutes for the meeting on February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do they have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I will second.
All right, we have a, any discussion? Got any, anything, sir?
No.
You're good? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All right, I'm sure that unanimous. Okay, I'll move on to item six, items for consideration and action, starting with item six dot one, consideration and action of the request of Ryan Webb of Greenbrier Homes for approval of a general, uh, zoning district change from SF two point five residential zoning district and GB, a general business zoning district, to a planned development district for the development of eight single-family lots, each one with a lot size of two and one-half acres. Uh, this is Rockwell CAD ID eleven four oh four, eleven four oh eight, and eleven four one seven. It's a twenty-acre track, uh, that's along SF two oh five and League Road. And with that, I'll ask for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, the app, the request is, uh, the approval of a zoning district change from SF single-family two point five residential zoning and GB general business zoning district to a planned development district for the development of eight single-family lots, each with a lot size of two and one-half acres of land. This application is in conformity with the recommendations of the McLean and Chisholm Comprehensive Plan, and therefore, the staff recommendation is approval subject to the following conditions. So, this will be for lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and so it will be to reduce the required minimum street frontage and lot width from three hundred linear feet to one hundred linear feet for each of the eight residential lots. And with that, I do believe that the developer is here, and I will turn it over to him, uh, for any questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Webb?
Like me to make a statement first before any questions? Okay, okay. Over a month ago, I purchased twenty acres on League Road that currently have two zoning types, as mentioned, residential two point five and, and a general business commercial. I applied for a PD at that time to use the residential portion for building homes and the commercial portion to start a small business. Many neighbors came out to the city meetings and voiced their opposition to the plan of having a business off of League Road. So, I have reapplied for a PD now to change the commercial portion of my land, which is only about five to ten percent of the twenty acres, to also be used as residential two point five acre lots for new custom homes. Uh, I have changed plans to try to appease the wishes of the neighbors. Approving this request will remove the option to be, to put a self-storage business on League Road, which is what the neighbors were against. Uh, the city planner and staff recommends approval, um, and have pointed out that the zoning change request conforms to the Comprehensive Plan. So, I ask that the P and Z board recommend approval to the city council. Thank you. Have any questions?
Thank you, sir. I'll ask the, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions. Any, 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 any more questions, sir? Okay, I'll, no questions, you can take, sit down, please. Thank you. I'll take your motion at this point.
So, motion to approve with the conditions?
All right, you have a second.
Second?
All right, um, I'd like to open it for discussion at this point. Um, so, any discussion items?
None. None, I think that the recommendation coming from the staff, uh, there suits, I think, the use of it in plan, so. That's page nine.
Okay, anything from the other?
Are those conditions, uh, agreeable?
Uh, I just have, uh, a couple of additional comments dealing with Exhibit B. So, um, hey, so, I'm, uh, for Exhibit B, under, uh, special provisions, uh, and I know we've used some of this language before with minor amendments to the PD, including minor, or, including minor amendments to the approved concept plan or development plan shall be satisfied with the following standards. I would, uh, recommend to the commission, uh, that we include a new item two, uh, that does not decre, decrease lot size, uh, under those for a minor, any kind of minor amendment, and a new item four that does not change from residential use. So, it would be, uh, now those four conditions would be, does not increase, and it's do or does, I, I was, it's our ta, our syntax there. Does, yeah, so it's a typo, all right, so we need to correct that as well. Does not increase density, does not change maximum structure height, reduce setbacks, or parking requirements, or reduce, um, or reduce the size of the residential lots. And, uh, that would negate the necessity for that additional add, so it would just be, um, the add-on item, item number three, which, uh, would be, and does not change from residential use. With that, just to clarify on those three points for a minor amendment, I know we've, council has been challenged on some, some of these minor amendment languages on other PDs, uh, that have come back a couple of years later. And then, on, uh, A, so on the next page, I just, I would recommend striking fail to, concepts or development plan fails to satisfy the standards of one and two above, I think just strike of one and two, it just follows the standard, right? That's the, that's any of those items. Uh, and then the third point, which was a tad confusing to me, is, uh, the statement, the property owner is requ, is requiring or requesting the wa, waiving of separate public hearings for each of the plans separately, I don't, I didn't understand what that meant within this context of Exhibit B.
So, that would be, um, so, that would be if they are, so I guess if there is another public hearing because there is either a combination of lots that there, so it would, if it would go from eight lots to seven lots, so let's say lots seven and eight are combined now, um, this would just kind of waive a separate public hearing for, I guess, for each of those. So, if lots seven and eight were combined, we would need, we would not need a separate public hearing because lots seven and eight have been combined, as long as they'll be residential and at least two and a half acres per lot.
But, so, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe a public hearing is required once the PD's been established.
Correct.
If there's, uh, changes due to the developmental plan per special provisions two A that we just discussed, uh, that, those provisions allow for changes to be done by the city administrator and, it just normally says with a mayor, right?
Correct, so it will be the mayor and the city administrator.
The mayor, without requiring to go back to P and Z or to city council, so there's no requirement for a public hearing, that's why I was, I, I think that's, I think that statement in there is not, is unnecessary in, in the exhibit, that's my point. If, if the, if the applicant or the, uh, owner of the homes, right, in the future decides they want to change, right, that can be a new application that would require a zoning change, let's hypothetically say that, then, then it would still require a public hearing.
Correct.
So, I'm just trying to clean up, uh, the language that's in there. I, I didn't think, Mr. Webb, did you have any objections to any of that? Okay. All right, so, um, if you're happy with that proposal, then that would be, uh, a minor amendment to the motion, which would include those changes.
So, I'd like to amend my suggestion earlier and add that content.
Okay. Is that sufficient? You got everything you need?
Yes.
Okay, and you're good on the second question?
I'm good on the second.
All right, now, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, move on to item six dot two, consideration and action of the request of James Belt, Gardner Construction Group, for approval of a zoning district change from SF two point five residential zoning district and GB general business zoning district to a general business, a GB general business district, for the development of commercial lots of roughly three acres in size. The application, or, that's, uh, Rockwell CAD sixteen eight two four and Rockwell CAD sixteen eight two five, and as I understand it, it's roughly six acres of land, did I get that right? Is that, it's six acres, okay. All right, so, with that, um, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so this request, uh, is for the approval of a zoning district change from, uh, SF two point five residential zoning district and a GB general business zoning district to a GB general business district for the development of two commercial lots, each roughly three acres in size. This, this application is in conformity with the recommendations of the McLean and Chisholm Comprehensive Plan, and the staff recommendation is approval subject to the following conditions, and these are both for lots one and two. So, expand both lots, which are currently both general business and single-family two point five, to GB general business zoning district boundaries. Uh, compliance with the existing GB general business zoning district areas required, and then parking for the GB general business development shall conform to the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that concludes the staff report, and I do believe that, uh, Gardner Construction Group is here, and, uh, I will turn it over to them if you have any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
What questions can I answer? We already presented it last time, or do we need to present it again?
I, um, look to my commission members.
Yeah.
Okay, so they, does anybody have any questions? The applicant? No, no, no?
Okay. And, just to clarify, the front of these, these lots are already in GB, it's just the back, back portion of them, so we're not changing everything.
I understand.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Um, okay, on that, I'll ask for a motion.
Uh, I make a motion to approve a zoning district change from the single-family two point five residential zoning district and a GB general business zoning district to a general business, uh, district for the development of two commercial lots, each roughly three acres in size. This application, uh, conforms to the recommendation of our Comprehensive Plan, based on the following, uh, conditions. Expand both lots currently, both GB and SF two five, to the GB general business zoning district boundary, be in compliance with existing general business zoning district area as required, and parking for the GB general business development shall conform to parking requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? No, 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 okay. I just had, uh, one question, and it's really the, uh, for A, for you. Uh, limited general zoning, and this is item two on the pages outnumbered, so it's the one on the zoning map. Um, limited the general business district shall be interpreted by zoning official as designated by the mayor and/or his, his/her designate. The zoning official may differ interpretation of the distance to the city council. So, two questions. One is, who is the zoning official? Because that's a phrase I had not heard before. And the second is, may differ interpretation of the distance, and what, what does that
So, currently, uh, the zoning official is done in-house, so that would either, that is me and Mr. Coker, uh, but I would definitely say that, I guess, this zoning official would probably be Mr. Coker. Uh, I can answer questions about that, but it would be in-house, so it would be done between me and Mr. Coker, we would be the two zoning officials. And then your next question was about...
Well, is that, is that zoning official designated, and how's that designated?
It's really designated, um, the council designates the zoning official, and so, since it just kind of falls within the Department of Planning, uh, we are just the designated zoning officials. So, I guess as our planning department grows and we get other planners, somebody will be a designated zoning official within the department.
All right, thank you. And then the other question was, just the zoning official may differ interpretation of the distance to city council, and I don't, that, that statement is a little nonsensical to me, so I'm just trying to understand that.
So, I understand what you're saying, um, it's just kind of a, I guess, a statement that we, I guess, more or less have to put in there by law, so if I said that the zoning distance was five hundred feet, but the council may say, oh, well, where do you, I guess, where are you counting that from? So, that statement is more or less kind of me going out as the zoning official and coming back with numbers, and then council could agree or disagree and say, we want it to be counted like this from this center line or things of that nature.
I, I think that, I think, and, and I, um, tragically, Mr. Webb, got caught in this, uh, discussion, is, this map continues to reflect, it's incorrect. And, uh, the interpretation is quite clear in this, in our ordinance, uh, from distance from center line of, of two oh five, and I realize the center line of two oh five may will change in the future. Uh, but the recommendation, uh, that we had to city council at the joint session, I think, is we should reexamine zoning application along the entirety of the two oh five corridor where the existing zoning is, so it's, we clean this up, so it's not, certainly would be less confusing to landowners. Then would help us, you know, we clean up our, you know, we get, just make it a lot smoother, so, okay. So, I apologize to the commission for making that all detour. So, we're going back and consider, uh, the motion was to approve this application, uh, with the additional conditions stated by the staff recommendation. Uh, we had a second, or a, uh, motion and a second, so now I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm sure that is unanimous as well. Thank you. So now, we'll move on to, uh, item six dot three, consideration and action of the site plan and landscaping plan presented by Mr. Berry. Uh, this is, uh, the property is a three point eight-five acre track of land along the east side of Cattle Baron Drive and south, south side of FM five fifty along the frontage, frontage along, uh, SF two oh five and Cattle Baron Drive. I think that's correct. Um, but there are the CAD ID references for ten one three two two and ten one three two three. So, Mr. Berry, are you? Okay.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, did you want me to go through my staff report before we turn it?
My apologies. We'll do the staff report first, but just stay there, hang there a second. Go ahead.
Uh, so this applicant is requesting approval of a site plan for the development of three commercial lots. Lot two R constitutes one point six two nine acres, lot three R one constitutes one point two two three nine acres, and lot three R two constitutes one point three five six five acres of land. The total acreage for the project is three point eight five acres. This development will be built in phases with phase one only including lot three R one. This application is in conformity with the recommendations of the McLean and Chisholm Comprehensive Plan, and the staff recommendation is approval subject to the following conditions for lot three R one. Uh, submission of an irrigation plan to city staff for review and approval prior to any project construction. Confirmation that the thirty-one foot easement adjacent to the property will be needed by broochers, and then confirmation that all retail buildings are within the maximum fire hose laid per city fire code standards. And that concludes my staff report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Carroll.
All right, sir, thank you.
As you can tell, on the site plan that's been submitted and the landscape plan, the initial concept is total build-out. Will be in three phases. First phase is going to be the long retail strip facing five fifty, and the intent, uh, based on talking with TechDOT, is they've approved all three driver approach locations the way we've got them shown. Uh, from the south, we get a ride in to the site, uh, helpful for the fire department. The fire lane wraps around the front and the back of the building, uh, comes out into the middle, and the north entrance is a ride out only. Um, and speaking with them, and we've been granted those. Uh, at this time, the civil engineers in communication with, uh, uh, Mr. Dove DeFray, and we're working out the water taps, the drainage. Uh, we've also got approval from TechDOT in coordinating the drainage as it goes down south along five fifty. So, a lot of development process has been in the works. Uh, phase one is ready to go, and so it's just a timing process. Uh, we've submitted the plans for your approval tonight, uh, we also have a, a rendering that we've done on the type of design that we're looking at, and I'm available for any questions. The owner is here with us tonight. If you have any questions for the owner, Mr. Berry's in the back.
Look to the commission for any questions.
My, my question is, um, I guess for staff more so than you, sir, uh, we are approving for a lot three R one, correct?
Correct.
Will, will this gentleman have to come back and get us approval for two R and three R two?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that, thank you.
Yeah, because at this time, we actually don't know who those tenants might be, so...
Brian Berry, two Essex Court, uh, I'm the developer and the owner. Just to clarify, uh, Mr. Road, this is a total site plan for all three lots, and just to clarify, as it relates to what you answered, yes, that you've got to come back for, could, could you expand on that for a second?
So, um, this is a site plan for three lots, but I guess for, for build-out site plans, you would have to, like, for, so you're presenting this site plan right now for phase one, which is lot three R one, so when you do phase two, which is, could be lot three R two or lot two R, you would just need to come back, I guess, and I present, I guess, a, I guess, a different site, not a different site.
That's what I want to clarify, is it's, it's, it's a site plan that encompasses all...
Yes, so, which is, so this site plan is for three R one, three R two, and then two R, but phase one is only for three R one, so during phase two, if you do three R two and two R during phase two, you would still need to come back to P and Z to go through phase two. So, each phase, you would need to come back and kind of not, not submit an entire...
But, I don't know that we're disputing one another, but the master site plan, which is what fearfully encompasses all three lots.
Right.
There's quite a way, an ingress, egress to the site, so I just want to clarify that the record will be, that we would have to come back for.
So, what you would, so what you would need to come back for is not the site plan, but a concept plan. So, just kind of showing the concept of kind of what would be in lot three R two and two R if you decided to do those two, I guess, three R two and two R if you were to do those as phase two, you would just need to kind of just provide a concept and a development plan for those.
Well, respectfully, that is a concept plan. So, I have no problem coming back.
Okay.
I'm available to come back for, that is a concept plan, which would include with the site plan approval, the fire lanes that, that, that are associated of what presently are shown, it's three, first of all, we want to come back for a plat, and then visit, we can platter a lot, but we, we have to start with a site plan approval first, which is what we're doing here.
Right.
So, I, I understand Mr. Road's question, but I don't necessarily agree that it's for, but what are we coming back for?
So, you would be coming back to do phase two and then fa, I guess, so we'll say three R two and two R are just going to be done in one phase. So, then when you would be coming back, you would be coming back to do those plats, and then you would, that's when you would have your concept plan and your development plan.
But the, these aren't plats.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's not what we said, that, that's all I, this is a...
So, you're not, so, so you're not going to have to come back and do another site plan for each of the three lots? That's, no.
But we would be coming back for a plat.
For, right, for each of these. Right, for each of these.
This would be a, would be a lead plat, restructuring of three parts.
Correct.
So when you come back, it's not site plan.
It's just for, it's with the, of the, correct.
So then you should, then I need to amend my motion to, I don't, to include three R one, three R two, and two R.
That's correct.
Is that acceptable?
I hang on to amending your emotion, because I, I have another point, I think.
Is that, is that acceptable to stamp?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To amend, to amend. To amend the motion, yes. Three R, two and two R.
Correct.
Yes.
That's acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a quick question on. Well, that's, you know, I, I, I would do this too. What kind of barriers do you think that can be chasing the power there?
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a wall, something that can block the movement of the project?
We have talked with the neighbors and desire to work with the neighbors, and I'm trying to get a feel if they don't want to see this thing at all. Or if they want to build another apartment, it's, uh, we have an issue.
I'm trying to help you here, get this, uh, make sure we understand what we're doing here. So. What I think we're, we're approving a site plan tonight for three R one, three R two, and two R. For the totality of this car seat.
For the site plan.
It's a site plan. We, we're approving the site plan laid out here. What has, what we're going to ask, uh, Mr. Berry. To come back with is a landscaping plan that includes the irrigation plan.
Correct, and we, and we've already been discussing that, you say yes.
And did I get that right, Brian? Okay, and then at a future time, there will be a plat that is required. I don't, and there's no plat that's been done yet.
Well, it's an existing plat now, as, as, as the existing lots.
Okay, okay.
It is a replat, yes.
Yeah, I can.
In which our next step, this, this is state one, is part of site approval. Then our next will be, uh, in conjunction with engineering via preliminary plat and final plat. Like we have the same time, which will encompass all the set engineering.
Yeah, thank you, that's what I, that's what I, I thought where we were. So that brings me to the second point in the staff recommendation. So the fifth thirty one, thirty foot, thirty one foot easement. So that's not reflected on this concept document? Is it, is it, is it reflected?
It's right, yes, yes.
And if it requires a thirty foot access, you, and what you're seeing is thirty one feet, we allow thirty one feet there just to have a flow. The, 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 the access needs when they bring the construction, they're, they're just thirty two.
Okay.
And it is reflected on, on, on the plat.
Okay, alright, got it, alright. I was confusing it with the other thirty foot.
Yeah.
Section, I got it, okay. So what are we asking if that, what's the question we're asking, uh, Mr. Berry to answer and confirm the thirty foot? If it's in the site plan, I assume it's confirmed.
Uh, uh, A was just confirming that it was reflected and that it is not being encroached onto the site plan. So that it would remain available in the future of the event that versus grocery company elect to move forward at the same.
Okay, but that's not going to be, the easement is going to be.
Unchanged.
The size of the easement, unchanged easement.
We cannot encroach on that.
Right, right, but it's, it's, um, I'm looking for what the easement's going to be, the surface of the easement's going to be. It's not going to be paved, it's going to be, it's going to be landscaped. Some type of, yeah, landscaping, thank you, that answers the question. So, so my question is, why is that a stated condition for approval?
We just needed confirmation that, we just needed that confirmation about the encroachment of that easement.
Yeah, but the, since we have this site layout, right, concept plan, site plan. It has that reflected on it, why would we?
We just needed confirmation from Brookshire's side, and that they had been having those conversations with Brookshires kind of about the encroachment.
But no, this is respect to the request, the answer that is, you know, he just wanted to confirm, confirm building.
Got it, okay, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good with that, and then the, the second part, and again, I'm just, maybe I'm just in a, in. My language mood. Max fire hose layout, pers- it's another phrase I haven't dealt with before, but we certainly have. Fire, or conditions for, for firefighting. A, a number of conditions, not just hose length. Is that? Is that unique to this?
It, it probably is.
Request.
Background of the public and the public for that, just to confirm that the hose reach wasn't blocked in the site plan we had in the layout. And then requesting to confirm that we would have been in contact of that, if we put hose.
Okay. And we're content that that's all been satisfied?
Yes.
Alright. I think that addressed all the concerns I had, so. Leave it to you, sir, to modify your motion.
Yes, uh, I would like to amend my motion that the site plan approval is for lot three R one and three R two and two R.
Second.
Alright. Off the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Alright, thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on. Six dot four. I think this is yours.
So this is our, just kind of our standing item to talk about ordinances, and I just wanted to bring, um. To you guys' attention that there has been some updates with the water language, especially on the preliminary plats. City council is moving forward at the next city council meeting on the twenty sixth. We should have updates to the preliminary plat to kind of talk about the water service plan that will be required. And so I just wanted to put that, uh, on you guys' radar. I know after the city council meeting and that change is approved, it will affect, uh, some of the ordinances. Um, and I will be working with the city council as well as staff to kind of. Pinpoint what types of changes that they would like to see in other ordinances, uh, as far as water service plan. So at our next meeting in April, um, I'm going to be ready to share those with you. I'm going to, uh, share the document with you all about the water service, uh, plans and those updates to the preliminary plat application. Uh, and then next meeting in April, April. Sixteenth, I believe, is our next meeting, we will be able to discuss those. So I'll send you guys the updated language and then some of the ordinances that council is wanting for us to kind of look at and kind of. Update when it comes to water service plans and water language. So I'm just putting that on your radar. So, yeah, uh, this item six point four, uh, it'll be a standing item, uh, every meeting, so.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay.
I have no issues with that, any, Commissioners, you have any questions?
Hey, so you said you'd be sending that out on the twenty sixth?
No, no, so, uh, the city council is going to take action on this on the twenty sixth. I can send out the language with the updated draft for the preliminary plat checklist with the updated water service plan language to you all as Commissioners. I can send that to you all tomorrow.
That's what's being voted on at the next city council?
Yes. Yes.
I was going to recommend you just wait until the city council, man. And send it, whatever the city council finally decides.
Yes, I'll send you, it's like the, I'll just send the draft language of kind of what we had been talking about internally and discussing with council about water service plans and kind of. Some of those documents that we're kind of referencing to make it more uniform for every developer and what we want to see in a water service plan. And not just kind of an at will service letter. And so that's kind of some of the things that we're working on now, um, and I'll be able to share those with you.
Okay, I, I, alright, look forward to the council's decision. Okay, any, anything else?
No.
On the ordinances, okay. Alright, so we'll move on to item seven, uh, it's an opportunity for each of the Commissioners. I'm going to. Reverse the order here, start with Mr. Easter, do you have anything for the, for your fellow Commissioners? You sure? Okay, sir.
Is he open now? I don't know.
Nothing. Nothing, nothing, no. So I just, uh, I just want to thank each of you, uh, that attended the meeting we had with city council in January. I think it was a good meeting. Are we still going to get minutes out of that eventually?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because I think it's important, and we had a number of action items we want to capture. The, uh, the next thing, I want to just make a generalized comment, uh. Mostly direct this to the audience, uh, and to the public at large. So the county, Rockwell County has initiated a strategic planning effort. For those that are not aware of that, uh, it has had its kickoff meeting, uh, with the, uh. Consultant that they're using, it's Baker Tilly and Fries and Nichols are the two. Consultants that have come together as a team. The city has two designated, uh, representatives to the CSC, the community. Committee that's been, uh, brought together from across the county to help guide this effort. But there will be a number of public workshops that are going to be held in the month of April. And those public workshops, no, I'm sorry, in the month of April or May, did I get that wrong? Lisa?
I believe it's May.
It's May, yeah, you're right, it is May. A number of public workshops in May that, uh, the public will be invited to participate in or, uh, either. Announcements will be made, but they're either going to be on Tuesday or Thursday. And they're going to be at Liberty Hall at the county courthouse. And that will be, like some of the public meetings we've had here, uh, dealing with the city, it'll have opportunity to come in. And I think the first one is going to be on economic development, if I, if I recall correctly. But there will be more coming out, there is a link on the county website for the strategic planning effort. So I would encourage everybody to take a look at that, they're also asking for any members of the community. Who want to participate in that effort to. Self identify, you fill out a little form and then identify what topics you're interested in, that may, that way they make sure they get the notices out to everybody. But it's, it's important because it's going to drive, it's, the, the goal of this plan is to plan out to twenty fifty, so it's going to, it's going to drive. A lot of thought, okay, the, the next item that I want to, I see the president of Chisholm Crossing, uh, phase one two. Homeowners Association is here, Mr. Crawford, thank you for joining us. There's going to be a candidate forum here on ten April from, uh, six to eight. Which will have an opportunity to hear from the candidates running for city ca- for mayor and city council positions. Here, whether it's, if it's a contested race or, uh, uncontested, we're going to, the same offer's been made to all the members. All the candidates to come out and address the public, so you can get a sense of that. And it's on, uh, ten April, Wednesday, ten April, uh, it will be from six to eight P M. Did I get that right, Tony?
Yep.
Good. So, uh, it'll be a great opportunity, I think, to hear, and then obviously the candidates will be available to talk to folks who want them as well. Get to, get to know the, uh, city council that, you know, the future city council that will come in. It's going to be in a pivotal, it's been important, all elections are important, but this one's going, I think, going to be important for, uh, guiding the future of the city. And then the last point I just want to make, and I'm, because I've, I've had a couple of, uh, folks asking me questions about. Development and density. And, uh, comprehensive plan, and I just call everybody's, a call to public's attention to page thirty five of the comprehensive plan, because. In the descriptions of land use, uh, and the varying areas of the city, it has specific descriptions, but I just, in general. As we went through the year long pro- or eight month long process to develop the new, uh, comprehensive plan, two thousand and one. There's specific language in here, but fundamentally, the majority of the city will maintain a maximum density. Residential density of one dwelling unit per acre excluding floodplain and rightaways in most areas. While encountering, encouraging development of multi acre lots to maintain the city's open spaces and rural appeal. That was a clear, clear statement in my mind by the public, so. I know we've had discussions about density, but as members of this commission. We are guided by comprehensive plan, which is guided by the viewpoints to the city. And, uh, I've been asked, uh, as the chair, I was asked, uh. By a member of council in open session, what was acceptable density? I will apologize to the public, I flubbed that answer badly, uh, in that. As they were considering a specific case, I was trying to, you know, get inside the mind of what they were talking about. But what the right answer would have been was, one, what's acceptable is a maximum residential density of one dwelling unit per acre. Exclusively floodplain and rightaways, that's the statement the public has made. That would be acceptable density, now. Acceptable is now becomes a question of political viability. I'll let, you know, let city council members handle that challenge, I'm not an elected official. I, we, our job is to just simply interpret. Will of the public as represented in the comprehensive plan and apply it against the ordinances that have been passed in the city. So I just remind that, and I know I don't need to remind my fellow Commissioners, but I think, uh, there's some. Sometimes misunderstanding about what the role, our role is in, uh, governing the future of the city. And how we're making. Any kind of application, because obviously we, you know, if it's change of zoning, we're going to have a public hearing, public's opportunity to comment. You know, when there's. You know, if we're going to be candid and frank, when there's a number of the public show up and basically tell you what you already know that's in the comprehensive plan. And that's contrary to what the application is, then we're put into a difficult position of trying to determine and interpret. So the interpretation we do is based within the comprehensive plan, will of the public, what's in the ordinance, and we make a recommendation to council. And then council makes the decision on what, what they accept, sometimes they go with what we do. Prefer that, but sometimes they, they choose to go in a different direction. Sometimes they go with what we do, prefer that, but sometimes they, they choose to go in a different direction, and we respect that, it's the rate of the city council to do that.
Well, towards that end, I mean, we cannot make or adopt ordinances or resolutions, but we can propose them, can't we?
Yes.
To the city council, strengthen this up, like perhaps put some definitions to them, identify this idea of desirable as rebuttable presumption, that I think the applicant should have the burden of demonstrating that the unique circumstances that they're proposing somehow warrant a departure from what you just read in there from page 35. And I think that might eliminate some of the ambiguity and certainty that you were confronted with when they're asking, what, what do you think of this? It's like, jeez, I don't know off the top of my head. But if we had some definitions and stuff in there, I think it might make our job a little easier, and certainly the council, and I'd be happy to try to put something together.
I would certainly encourage that, and I think, you know, certainly any of the commissioners can offer, offer those up. I just, as we, we just need to make sure that's an agenda item, so that we properly address it within constructive law, and Asa obviously provide that. I, I, I don't make those judgments on what goes on the agenda or not, I just pass it to Asa and then.
No, I could give it a try to put something together and figure out the next step in the process. It is, it would be helpful to avoid those sorts of circumstances.
Well, I, I mean, our goal here is, in my mind, is always, because I agree with you in that, and I think the goal here is always to provide, you know, eyes wide open for everybody that's participating in the process.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Good deal. All right. I think you're contemplating something, Mr. Fries.
Yeah, I would just second what you were saying, I think we've had many discussions in there, we went through certain decision processes, and we've made some determinations on which way we interpret things and the way that we go. And one of the first things that I mentioned when I first joined the mission was about the consistency of how we apply our works, that we put the city out of hot water, in turn, it's us all at a stock there. So I like that, I, it could, I think, if we almost, I hate to say this, as a scrub, that we start trying to make these decisions, that we go back and get with Mr. Coker and with Mr. Rivera about identifying what pieces need to be strengthened or clarified in the ordinances, and then get that as a recommendation back up.
We want to pass Mr. Howell, too.
Well, he's more like, more like.
We'll handle that piece. Okay, good discussion. Any other comments, staff, anything from you?
We want to report from the little bit.
It's not an agenda item, I'll be happy to talk to anybody about. I will, I will just tell you one anecdotal story, because I love this, at least how it was explained. We're in a city called Tromso, which is a, it's the northernmost university in the world. Arctic, above the Arctic Circle. It's a generally ice-free port in Norway. And it's on, the city is on an island, and on the, surrounded by fjords, and on the, there's a spine that runs down this island, so they, on the backside of it, right, the city has developed all the way around it. Some engineer, you know, some enterprising guy says, I got a great idea, why don't we dig a tunnel through this mountain and make it easier so you can go back and forth? You know, this is late 1800s, city council says, nah, bad idea. And so he decides he's going to start digging a tunnel, and then, nope, he gets arrested, and then he goes on the other side of the island and starts digging tunnels from the other side. Well, now they have a very extensive tunnel network, right, which has allowed the city to really flourish and develop. Guy's local hero. So I just, I just saw this as a great learning lesson, that, you know, somebody who had vision, maybe not the best way to present it, but ends up being a hero long, so.
Keep looking at you.
I'm, I'm looking at all you, because we all come together.
He has the chance, so.
Start digging a tunnel.
Yeah, that's, or Julie, that's one thing we don't need here. Okay, and with that, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and make me.
All right. So moved.
Too funny.